Good evening, everyone. It's so good to see you here participating and sharing in the Syracuse City redistricting commission process, your process. Welcome to today's hearing. We are convening today's hearing to gather information and ideas from the public on how to best redraw the city's five common council districts. The U.S. Constitution requires that a census be taken once a decade and that legislative district lines be redrawn to reflect population changes from the census. So these district lines will be drawn reflecting the just-done 2020 census. Before we start, I'd like to have each commission member introduce themselves in their district. I will also provide an overview for you of our goals, the laws we have to follow, and the district they, with the common, with the commissioners, the district they represent. With the laws we have to follow, I'm gonna jump back a little bit, and the ideas you could consider for your testimony. When you do come up and testify or have anything to say, please come to the mic. It's set up for you and ready to go, and just speak directly into the mic. We do have some members here that we're definitely gonna ask to hear from, and that is Common Counselor at Large at President Helen Hudson, who will come and welcome and have something to say. We're glad she's decided to join us today. And if the common counselors, starting with Colleen, would introduce you, um, the commissioners. I just elevated you, okay? The commissioners, uh, would you introduce yourself and the district you represent? Thank you.
Colleen Lathy, Fifth District.
Charles Jackson, First District.
Molly Lizio, Second District.
Bob Davis, Third District.
Graham Luskey.
Fourth District.
Jason Bellge, Second District.
Maritza Alvarado, Third District.
Anthony Tolbert, Third District.
John Hamblin, I live in the First District.
Thank you, thank you. What are our goals of the redistricting commission, which I will now refer to as S C R C? Our goal is to go around the city and convene hearings to listen to the public before we draft new district lines. This is our second hearing, and more hearings will be held before we finalize a new plan to submit to the common council later this year. The new district lines will be used next year, 2023, for common council elections and for each year through this entire decade. Our work is guided by several federal, state, and city law. So what laws are they? Most importantly is the need to create new districts that are equally populated, reflecting the one-person, one-vote doctrine. The districts cannot exceed an overall difference or deviation of 5% from the size of the smallest district to the largest district. Secondly, we have to ensure that minority voting rights are respected and that our plan does not deny equal opportunities to racial or language minority groups that can be properly created. These two requirements are required by federal and state laws. State law also requires that districts are made of contiguous, sorry, contiguous, y'all know what I mean, territory, meaning that you can travel from one of the districts to another and never leave the district. Districts must also be as compact as practical, practicable, so that our districts are not shaped in odd or misshapen ways. State law also requires that districts cannot be drawn in favor or disfavor incumbents, candidates, or political parties. We must also consider the cores of existing districts and communities of interest so that like-minded neighborhoods are kept intact to the extent impossible. Possible. A new state law says that this, this is what we must have. These criteria are ranked in priority order, and the priority order are: population equality, minority voting rights, that word I couldn't pronounce, continuity, compactness, not favoring or disfavoring parties or candidates, maintaining core districts, and respecting communities of interest. We also have the following additional city laws that require us to use existing election precinct boundaries, follow geographically identifiable boundaries, and not use the residencies of incumbent or potential candidates in developing a new plan. So as you can see, we have a lot of work to do. But before we draw the map, we have to hear from you. What should we consider with our new map? Schools? Shopping areas? Parks? Other commonalities? Let us know your feelings, your reasons why you chose that. Should district reflect any other things that we may not be aware of, but is common to your neighborhood? Each speaker has three minutes. As you come up to the mic, you have three minutes to share your thoughts and your words on what you think the best district drawing of the maps should be. So please come to the mic, state your name and your affiliation. I have already asked our Common Counselor at Large President Helen Hudson to come forward and to welcome us, and she has graciously agreed to do that. Thank you. Good evening. And I just wanna say, I am so, so very proud of all of you. I wanna say thank you. I wanna say thank you for taking on this not-so-easy chore, because we're a decade out, so we're already behind eight ball. So you're trying to catch up, you're trying to come to speed, and I know that it's a lot of work. I know that you're all volunteers, and please know from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate each and every one of you stepping up to do your civic duty. And hopefully, we won't be another 20 years down the road. Hopefully, our next decade will be ready to go, the commission is set up, and that we can continue the work that you guys have started. So again, I just wanna say thank you for taking on this chore. We're small and number this evening, but that shouldn't stop us from saying anything we have to say or share about how we want these districts drawn. So if anyone would be willing to come forth and talk a little bit about what you're looking for, what you expect, what you would like, we're, okay? All right, okay? I forgot to say something, because this is being livestreamed. So I just wanna say this to the community, come out. Don't wait to the last minute. Don't, you know, you have so much to say when it's over and done. Your input is needed now, because once these lines are drawn, once they're complete, they're done, and you won't have a say again for another decade. So I'm imploring you, come to the meetings. There are seven o'clock at the different high schools. I'll share it again on my Facebook page. It's being shared by the redistricting committee, uh, committee. So pick, follow along, and just come out. Come out and offer your opinion. Tell us what you wanna see, tell us what you don't wanna see, not us, but you guys. But we need you to come out. Thanks. I wanna thank Ms. Hudson for doing that, for talking about the need for everyone to come out and be a part of this. It is so important and so necessary. As she said, we don't want anyone to be, to not have been involved in the process and then feel that the process left you out, and then you're upset with the process. We have another hearing. Our next hearing is gonna be held on Thursday, April 7th, at Henneger High School, again at 7:00 P.M. Let me repeat that twice, because I know people need to hear things three times before they get them. So it's Thursday, April 7th, at Henneger High School at 7:00 P.M. Thursday, April 7th, at 7:00 P.M. at Henneger High School. Is there anyone who'd like to come forth and add anything or say anything about the redistricting process? We're here to listen, that is our job. This is being recorded. We will look at it and definitely include any input you have, any thoughts you have. We will do our best to be as gracious and open as possible. So you're more than welcome, Dustin.
So I didn't plan on speaking today, but again, I wanna echo Common Council President Helen Hudson. Thank you for doing what you're doing involuntarily. Also wanna thank Common Council President Helen Hudson, who was the driving force in putting this legislation into, uh, you know, into interaction and into being at the common council. It's not often that a legislative body gives up their power for the betterment of the community, and it can't be said enough how incredibly brave and powerful that statement is that they made and putting it in the hands of regular citizens. I hope a few more of you that are in the room come up and share some of what you think your neighborhoods are, because that is what this commission is here to hear, is you do not need to be an expert. Redistricting should be in the hands of people. It should be in the hands of you. So I know there's a few people here, so please, come up. It doesn't matter whether you're on this side of town or from another side of town. Please come forward and express what you believe your neighborhood is, because that's what they need to hear. Last week, I put forward some testimony about what I feel as Elections Commissioner are some of the natural boundaries that are out there, but by no means is that, should that be the final word, and I hope it won't be, because we have 146,000 residents in the city of Syracuse, 68,000 voters in the city of Syracuse, and we need to hear from people before they draft the lines. And once they draft the lines, we need to know whether you like those lines and then allow for that change to go into place. I was talking to Mr. Hamblin before the meeting, and it is funny. One of the things that we couldn't figure out is exactly where Fowler High School was in the, in the common council districts. And I think that actually shows another kind of flaw in maybe some of the current districts, is we know Corcoran High School is solidly in the third common council district. We know that Henneger is solidly in the first common council district. We know that I T C is solidly in the fourth common council district. And then, of course, Nottingham is solidly in the fifth common council district, as they're drawn now. But, you know, Fowler has a long history of kinda being overlooked, you know, for, by many different aspects of city government. Recently, though, I mean, we got a beautiful field out front. There's a lot of investment going on into this high school, but for many years, I remember cafeteria smells and sewer backups. And one of the reasons was they felt that Fowler was being overlooked because it was on the edge of a lot of different districts. It's on the edge of the second district, it's on the edge of the third district, it's on the edge of the fourth district. So taking into account high schools and where they are, the traditional high schools, and while students can go to different high schools inside the city, we all know that 90% of the neighborhood around a high school is where people go. And that forms neighborhoods as well, and that forms districts as well. So I hope beyond political subdivisions, you look at those school district subdivisions as well. I also, you know, there was some great testimony at the last hearing about the Washington Square area, a neighborhood that I don't think even I knew was part of what they consider themselves a neighborhood. So we do have these defined neighborhoods inside the city of Syracuse, and that's great. But we also have these undefined neighborhoods that are, you know, different communities believe they are together, whether we put them in the same common council districts or not. And that's something that this committee, I hope, takes a look at as well. And so I do hope that those types of stories are shared, and because I think that will give you the color that you need to figure out what our patterns of, of self-identification are in the city of Syracuse, a very diverse city and a city of many different communities. So I just, I continue to echo like Common Council President, please come out. Please come out to these hearings. You know, in some ways, I know that animosity breeds participation, and we saw that with the, with the county redistricting, but it should not be that way. Let's, and though people, I believe, trust this process, and that's a great thing, and maybe they trust the 15 average citizens that are leading this, this commission to come up with fair maps, they need to hear from us as well. So please come out, please be a part of this, whether in writing or as during the upcoming three hearings. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Is anyone now, after that rousing, getting us all excited, would we have some individuals here, would you like to come forward and share your thoughts on redistricting? Okay.
I just want you to ask if she's here somewhere.
No, she's not here. I know everybody here.
Okay, then that's fine.
Thank, okay, all right. We have individuals online, and we wanted to know if they would like to come forth and ask questions. Mr. Josh Simmons, if you would ask a question, if your floor is, the floor is open to you?
Yes, Josh Simmons. I guess not so much as a question, as just sort of, I wanted to talk a little bit about the redistricting process here, maybe a little bit of my involvement in it and how the audience and the people of the city of Syracuse can help me to do my job better. I'm Senior Research Associate at the Benjamin Center for Public Policy Initiatives. I'm a geographic information system specialist, which is a really fancy way to say that I make maps. I also have a political science background, so redistricting is kind of like the melding of, of some of my skill sets there. And I have some familiarity of the city of Syracuse. My grandmother was born there, my mother was born there. My great-grandfather was the head of lithography at Syracuse China until his retirement, but I don't have intimate knowledge of the city of Syracuse. And so I kinda wanted to talk a little bit about how we define community and how we define neighborhoods. And, and I would, I would challenge the audience, you know, people at home, people here, people who will see this later, to think about how they define the communities that they're involved in. And we've had some great suggestions, neighborhoods are communities, they're cohesive places, they're, they draw people around, the commonality of, you know, what shops are there, where they live, who they see when they leave their house. Schools are another one, you know? We send our children to the, to schools, and which schools we send them to determines who they, who they interact with. There are others, you know, the churches can be, can form communities. There are, where we shop can form communities. There, there are all kinds of things, and I kind of would like people to sort of think about, you know, what communities do you consider yourself a part of, and are those geographically defined? And why that matters is because, I mean, it is my fervent belief that redistricting is the absolute foundation of our entire representative democracy. Without fair redistricting that reflects the needs, the wills, and the commonalities of people, we don't have representatives that reflect the needs and commonalities of people. It is a shame that in this country, so often politicians get to choose their voters rather than voters choosing their politicians. And I am heartened, the city of Syracuse has enacted a fair and separate process. It is separated from the political process intentionally, because you can never ask somebody with power to willfully yield that power. The, I can count on one hand historical examples that I can think of where that's ever happened. And so what you need is, is somebody removed from that to be able to do these things. Now, why, what communities and neighborhoods and how you define that matter to me is because I'm drawing lines that can sometimes seem very arbitrary. You know, there are cores, there are things that are obvious, but around the, around the periphery of that, there are things that are non-obvious. And the more that I can understand the interworkings of the neighborhoods and communities in Syracuse, the better that I can help to preserve them and group them in a way that makes some kind of rational sense in redistricting. And this, this is the foundation of ensuring that in your government, your voice is heard and that you are being advocated for. You know, we heard at the last public hearing that a politician had told somebody that we don't need to pay attention to that neighborhood, because even if nobody votes, you know, from us votes there, we still get reelected, and it doesn't matter. And that's a shame. If there were more commonality within that district, then the interests of that one neighborhood would be common with the interests of other neighborhoods and other places within that district, and better representation for that place, and everyone really might be achieved. So I would, I would challenge, you know, anybody who's listening to this to think, you know, about how you define the communities that you belong to, what you would like to see in terms of, you know, grouping or protection of that, and convey it to the redistricting commission so that I, help me do my job better. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Josh. Before, we've just had two individuals walk into the room that I think need to be recognized. And one of them is our newly-elected Common Counselor, Charles Garland. And if you would like to just come up and welcome, that would be wonderful. We also have our own deputy mayor, Mrs. Sharon Owens, online, so we would really look forward to hearing a hello from her as well.
Oh, hello, everyone. Appreciate all of your work. We hope this works out very well. We've been watching nationwide with the maps and everything going on. So we'd just like to thank working as a group that will reach the outcome that we're looking for. So that's what we're hoping for.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor, Mrs. Owens, are you available to us?
Hello.
Oh, there she is.
I was trying to manipulate the mute button on my phone. Nothing to add, I'm here to listen. Really appreciated the comments around the role that really thinking about neighborhood schools play. That was a very important comment that was made. So I'm here to, to, to listen. I got the notice earlier this week, and I wanted to make sure I tuned in. So thank you again, reiterate what my good friend Helen said. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. The next person is, would be Gerald Benjamin. Mr. Benjamin, would you like to share a few words with us, your thoughts? Online. Is he having difficulty? He's speaking, but we can't hear. We're working on it, Mr. Benjamin, we're working on till we can hear you. I think you're ready to go.
I think, I'm, I created, I created the Benjamin Center some years ago to help local governments do their best work. And one thing we decided to do was to pay attention to the hundred and some local governments in New York State that have to redistrict, counties, cities, some towns, and even some school districts. And with Josh, who, one of, is, I would call him one of the two or three leading experts on drawing maps for redistricting in the state, we decided to reach out and see if people wanted to get, get us involved a little in helping them out, since we've done this a good deal. And I'm very pleased that some, that Syracuse has provided leadership among the cities in New York State to do this in a neutral and unpartisan way. It's very hard to do, very hard to write the laws, and very hard to keep people focused on the general good rather than the specific good of their particular neighborhood or associations or groups. And a lot of confidence, I wrote you, I wrote an essay for the commission that talked about how people in the United States are losing confidence in their government, because they think that they're run by self-interested politicians who don't pay attention to the communities enough. And this is, this is one of the key ways to help people understand that they can do it. They can, they can do democracy, you create government that'll be responsive to them. But we're happy to be, mostly what I've been doing is very supplementary. I haven't been doing the work, Josh and, and Jeff have been doing the work, but I've been trying to observe and make comments and be helpful from, from the sidelines. So that's what I'm here doing, and I'm happy to be able to help where I can, and I'm very happy that you're doing this.
Thank you, thank you so much. Is there anyone here who would also, was at this time, would like to share some words? Not that I'd like to put you on the spot, but my friend, Charles Pierce L., always has something to share. He is a community stronghold, been active since, since I've known him, for years, over 25, 30 years. Oh, and you had something to read, okay. Well, great, there's anything to read.
Thanks for putting me on the spot, Doug, as you will. Thank you, commissioners, for being here and listening to us, particularly community people that's engaged. I have, my issue and my concern, particularly on the south side of the city of Syracuse, where I was born and raised in the 15th ward, and up to present day as far as the population and also the movement around, other mapping, Dustin was talking about earlier, other people talking about the community engagement and stuff. I'm a community activist, you know, and I've been, my main thing is, in that is voter education versus voter registration, because if you educate our people, then they'll get out there and vote, and they have their choices. But with the mapping, I think you guys have do a fair job in that, and listening to the people that really wanna change in their community. I'm also part of I-81, the roundabout issues there, you know? So I'm engaging in a lot of these things in our city mapping. And I wanna thank President, President of the Council, Helen Hudson, for getting this on the move as she did before, you know? So you did a great job, President, you know? And these mapping, these mapping issues and stuff, especially with some of them being in violation of 1964 Civil Rights Act, as far as the population and stuff, where we're, the 16th has people from Salvi now in this area, Stratmore and stuff. And, you know, these things need to be, particularly in the 16th ward, where the original maps were drawn out, because we had a population of 68%, and now it's down to 42%, which is ludicrous. It shouldn't happen just in that particular district, but it has. You know, and I think you guys should look at that, find out the reason it did happen, whether there was some discrimination practices going involved in that issue. There's a lot of things that need to be talked about when you take 68%, 69% of a population that's in, in voting in that area, because we got an African-American legislator, and then you knock that down to 42% to 39%, it's ludicrous. then you knock that down to 42% to 39% is ludicrous. So I think you need to look at that, rectify that, bring it back to where it's supposed to be in these six, 17 counties that we have, legislative districts that we have. And that's all I have to say on that issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce L. Thank you so much. The floor is open. It will remain open for anyone who would like to come forward and share some ideas. Okay, thank you. Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. Come forward.
Hi, everybody. My name's Robin Hamblin, and my husband's on the commission, John Hamblin. And I'm actually talking to all of my students, past and present. Those of you that know me, I have been teaching in the Syracuse City School District since 1994, and our community has changed an awful lot. And I think the most important thing that happens here is that you also listen to our young people, and we try to engage our young people. I know that's so difficult. They work hard, and it's very, very difficult for them. They do not have the best of everything, and daily life is difficult. Standing, waiting for the bus is not pleasant. It's a long day. And our young parents, who are sending their kids to school, really have a struggle about putting their child on the bus because of the issues that their child has to to deal with every day. And we have fabulous people in the district. You know, the teachers are great teachers, and the administrators work so hard every day, but it's just there are daily, day-to-day living issues that our community deals with that I think is hidden. And it's so important to to reach out to our young parents and to our young people who are 18, 19, 20, old enough to vote. And so to all of those of you that are hearing me that might remember Mrs. Hamblin's music class from 25 years ago, please come to these meetings. You are important and you are valued, and we want to hear what you think. You've gone many, many years with being the unheard voices, and I just want to employ you to 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 come and to join us at these meetings and to and to share, share your story, share what you want to see happen with the city, see, share how you feel that the redistricting of our community should go so that you can have a voice in our city's government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hamblin. We appreciate your voice. Before I ask Mr. Jeff Weiss to come forward and tell us a little bit about what redistricting is and what it means and the importance of it, one last shout out to anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak a little bit. We would we appreciate you, and we're glad you're here. So, Jeff, your honor, thank you.
Jeff, thank you. It's my pleasure to talk with you for a few minutes this evening. I'm Jeff Weiss, and I serve as counsel to this commission. I'm based at New York Law School in New York City, where we provide assistance, one-stop-shop on everything related to redistricting. But I was very pleased to partner with Jerry Benjamin and Josh Simons at Sudi New Paltz to provide everything from legal and program and mapping services to this commission, something very, you know, important to all of us and is very much worth the effort to put the time into this. I think Robin Hamblin just hit the nail on the head in terms of why redistricting is so important. Usually, I try to make this, you know, colorful to people to understand that it's just not a line joining process that's required by the Constitution once every 10 years, but to think in terms of looking outside your window, your schools, your streets, hospitals, senior centers, health facilities, all of the things that are important to you that are funded by or driven by government relate to redistricting, that the people that you elect to serve in City Hall, also in Washington and in Albany, are are determined by the districts that they represent. So why is this important? It's going to determine the quality of the services that you receive from government for the next decade. Syracuse is also in a very unique position, not only in New York State, but the nation. We read in today's newspapers about how yesterday a court in Maryland rejected the state's congressional redistricting map as a partisan gerrymander. Earlier this week, the Ohio State Supreme Court, that was a Democratic drawing plan in Maryland, in Ohio with a Republican drawing plan, the state court there for the third time has rejected the effort by the state to draw its congressional and state lines because the states are so important, and this is, you know, this is headline news. In Syracuse, the voters of the city, the city council, you know, created this new system to have an independent commission of volunteer citizens grouped together to draw the new lines. We don't find that anywhere else in New York State. So, you know, the effort that these individuals are putting forward is really unique, really important, and we need to make sure that the lines reflect what you all want. Later this week, on Thursday, in in Stuben County, we're going to hear closing arguments in a state redistricting lawsuit that challenges the new New York State Congressional and State Senate lines. The state plans always end up in court over partisan issues or other sorts of debates, but we're looking in Syracuse to use a new commission to get the job done right, but we could only do it with your support, with your input, with your participation. So there will be more hearings, different nights of the week, different times of the day. So I'm just asking and joining everyone else tonight to please make the effort to let us know what you want the city to look like for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. I'm going to ask one more time because it's a process, and we really would like to hear from everyone who's here, if you would like to say anything concerning the redistricting process. You're here, and we appreciate you taking the time to come out and just listen and learn more about what redistricting is, but we're here to hear from you. So if you have any ideas about, you know, there may be a neighborhood, or there may be a store, or there may be a a a small business that has been in your neighborhood, and you think that it should really, and there's a community that has been developed around that small business or that store, we'd like to hear from you and see how you feel about that being remaining in a certain area or being part of this redistricting. So with that being said, what I'd like to do, it is almost 10 minutes to eight, and I just would like to know, is do any of our commissioners, I have any comments they would like to share or add? It may be time to close it down. Or anyone online who would like to share anything? Thank you, Ma.
I just want to acknowledge those of you who did come out tonight. We see some repeat faces from our last meeting, and it's really warming for us to be able to see that people do really care about this issue, and you just want to know what's going on with us. So this process is something that will get more exciting as we get maps coming out. So this is really just our pre-planning stage where we're getting information. And so we're so happy that you're involved and excited even now to come at 7 o'clock on a Saturday night. So we really appreciate you guys coming out, and we couldn't be more excited to get started in a few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. As Molly said, this is a process, and this is the first part of the process. And so we really encourage you and really need your input and your insight into exactly how this is going to work for us. So again, we thank you for coming. We thank you for being a part of this. We thank you for being willing to share. Any words, please go to our website, go to our Facebook page, and just put any thoughts and ideas. If you did not want to speak tonight, that's fine, but we listen and we hear and we read it, and we really want to know what anybody thinks about this entire process. So we encourage you to please join us and to voice your opinions. It's important. It's important. As Jeff said, there have been suits by different areas, so we try to get this process right so that, you know, we don't have to go through that legal process. Okay? So thank you so much, and have a great evening, and thank you again for coming. Next meeting, what did I say? It is Thursday, April 7th, at 7:00 PM at Henninger High School. Hope to see you there. Have a good night. Bye-bye.